Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello, everybody. We're really glad you're here today.
We really are. And we also have Julie and Colin from our team with us. What's up you guys? Glad to see you're here today.
Hey, everyone.
Come on into the chat. Let us know where in the world you are. We always love to hear from you guys and see you. Here's our favorite time of week. It is Thursday at noon Eastern US time. This is your time to get together as Young Living brand partners and learn smart ways to grow your business. This is free to the entire community. And of course, we at Get Oiling have tools to help you implement what we'll be talking about today. You do not have to be a member of Get Oiling to benefit from what we're doing here and to join us every week. But we certainly hope that you will give us a try. We're a dollar for your first month for our most popular plans. And we have everything that you need outside of the virtual office to grow and share Young Living by working smarter, not harder. From day one to Royal Crown Diamond. So we are so thrilled that you've chosen to spend this time with us here today. Where we're going to be talking about using QR codes with Get Oiling to facilitate sharing. So we're going to talk about what they are, how they work, how you use them with Get Oiling, and then the specific use cases. So where you might put one, how you might use them for different purposes, and where if someone takes a, uses their phone and hovers over the QR code, where we might send them specifically, because we want to be strategic about that. So go ahead, again, head into the chat. Let us know where you are. If you are in our Facebook group, say hello in there. We are streaming in there as well. That is another free resource for you to support you in your journey with sharing Young Living. So we're going to go ahead and hop out of video. I've got some slides prepared for you. And we will all come back at the close of our call today, back to video, where we will, you know, come back on and chat a little bit more. We always do have an opportunity to work together live with you on these calls. So that opportunity will come up after we get through this initial bit of training here. So again, as promised, on the Get Growing Weekly Work Session, we are talking about using QR codes with Get Oiling and the different ways that you can put these two awesome things together to share. So we will talk about what QR codes are, how they can connect to your Get Oiling website, and then how you can make QR codes and share them. And I should put out here, first and foremost, QR codes are something that would be considered an adjacent tool to Get Oiling. So we don't have a QR code creator with Get Oiling. But if you are creating a QR code, you need to send them to a web address. And with Get Oiling, that is one of the things that you do have. And it's much smarter place, in my opinion, to send somebody than simply to the Young Living website or to a product. You can actually do a bit more with it if you're sending them to a page on your own website. And of course, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. If you signed up for a live worker review and you're here, maybe pop into the Q and A, just send us a quick message and let us know that you're here. And there, of course, will be space for anyone who's here today who has questions, because we are here throughout the call to work with you. So you can go to the Q and A right now. If you need help with something, you have a question, go ahead and pop that in there here on the live call. Or of course, if you're in the Facebook group, you could pop that in the discussion as well. If you would like to join us on a live call like this one, if you're in the Facebook group now and you're seeing this, or you're watching this on YouTube as a recording, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And here you will be able to get a link every week to join our live Zoom that we are on right now. You will also be the first to get replays and resources. And of course, you'll know what's coming up each week. Now, if you would like help on a live call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview. And we can work on anything together. If you are just getting started with Get Oiling and you're trying to figure out what to do next, if you have a vendor event coming up and you need some help, if you are building a website and you're stuck on a particular feature or function, we've got you. So make sure that you sign up there and you'll be able to work together with us on an upcoming call, just like this one. And if you would just like to hand off what you want done to someone else to do it for you, we've got you covered there as well. If you want your website built, you want a custom education portal for your Young Living customers, whatever that might look like for you that you need help with, maybe it's just having somebody sit there with you and walk you through how to do things. That's also something you can do. GetOiling.com/concierge. We have an incredible qualified team who can help you with whatever it is that you need help with with your Get Oiling site. Now, let me know in the chat, do you use QR codes? And if you do, tell us, where do you use them? How do you use them? Do you put them on a business card? Are they on flyers, on stickers, on sample products? What does that look like for you? We did do a training previously where we did mention QR codes. It just wasn't a dedicated QR code training. And that is one where we talk about working with local professionals. So if you look up QR codes, if you search our live training recordings in the Get Oiling Success Academy, then you will see that there is one called How to Work with Local Professionals, where we talk about putting QR codes on a sample spray bottle of Thieves Household Cleaner that you're giving to a Realtor to give away to their clients as a sort of welcome home, right? If they've purchased a new home, like a welcome home gift. So definitely check that out. Let's see, we've got, a lot of folks want to learn. Sherry wants to use them for vendor events. Stacy uses them on Get to Know You cards. Awesome. Yes, I've used a couple to hand out access to an Essential Oils 101 class and a lead magnet to a meditation. Fantastic. Awesome. Alright, so let's talk a little bit about what these are before we get into making them and talking about how we'll use them. So first things first, these are codes. They're square shaped. They're kind of barcodey, funny, scribbly looking codes that are readable by smartphones that are used for storing and sharing information, specifically web addresses. Alright, they can be made for free. And this would be like a simple version and Canva has a free creator for this. And I'll actually show you what that looks like here on this call. Or you could go to a paid QR code creator. I think Canva might have some pro in their pro features. Some of these where you can actually create a QR code that might have your logo in the center of it, just as an example. Totally not necessary, but it is an extra touch that you could add if you wanted to. QR codes are used in physical interactions, physical instances, where you want to send somebody to a website, but sharing the www dot whatever, whatever dot com slash whatever is inconvenient, right? When you're standing in front of a light pole and there's a flyer tacked up to it, you aren't going to open up your phone and try to type in that web address, probably. You know, the better thing to do would be to scan this code and that's going to send them straight to whatever that link is, right? Same for at a vendor table on the back of a product, et cetera. It's just an easier way, a more convenient way to share a web address. Now, these codes that you create can be reused so long as that destination URL, meaning where, when they scan, you send them to, is the same. And let's talk a little bit about how we can use these as brand partners. So we'll talk first about where they appear, right? So where this QR code would be seen, and then we'll talk about where that will send them to, just as some examples, and they don't necessarily directly correlate, but they are loose examples. So flyers are a fantastic place to put a QR code. So if you have a flyer, for instance, you're at a vendor table and you have a flyer talking about the savings that someone gets when they purchase the Make a Shift kit, and it compares the cost of, of products if they had purchased them otherwise from Young Living, the breakdown of the cost of use, et cetera, all of the benefits of this particular kit and its products. And what do you want them to do? You want them to go buy it, right? But you don't want to put yourwebsite.com/whatever/whatever/whatever, or God forbid, the Young Living website slash referral, whatever, you know, your link from Young Living, right? So a QR code is going to be a great thing to pop onto a flyer, because if they hover their phone over, it will take them straight to the exact page you want them to go to, right? Same for business cards. This is a really cool way for you to, to share your virtual contact file or VCF file, your contact card in your phone. It's also a great way, if you want to send someone to your website from your business card. So whatever your website address is, you would hook that up to a QR code, pop that on a business card, and people can easily go to that website or a page on your website. Product labels, right? So if you, again, if you wanted to create a sample product and you wanted to show someone where they could go to learn more about the product or straight to purchase the product, then you could print your labels for those samples with QR codes on them. Banners, if you have banners behind you at a vendor booth, for example, and in print media, if you offer to write in your local paper an article about greenwashing or about back to school wellness, then you could offer them a QR code to post in the article, maybe next to your photo or something like that, where you could maybe offer for them to, if someone sees it, if they wanted to go and get your free guide or something like that, you could have them do that and they would go to your landing page, just as an example. And then if you are speaking, I don't know how many of you guys give talks, it's a fantastic way of teaching. This is a fantastic way to, if you're using slides on a stage, then you can, of course, display this QR code in your slides to send them wherever you want them to go. Now, where do QR codes go? They're always going to go to a URL that is a web address. So that can be the homepage of your website, pages or landing pages on your website, event pages. So if you have events coming up and you want to promote them, then you can, of course, have a QR code for those. Product listings in your store, if you have the store feature enabled in Get Oiling, you could also go direct to Young Living, right, to Young Living products specifically. You want to be careful with this, because you want to make sure that you are sending someone to the correctly coded Young Living product link, so that if they do decide to purchase, they're your customer. And then essentially, any public page on your site, if it's published, i.e. not in your member area and it's visible to the public, if it's a blog post, or even if you have a file in your Get Oiling system, like a PDF or a VCF, like a contact card, all of those are linkable URLs that you could connect to a QR code. Alright, now let's talk about how to make and use them. First, we want to figure out where the QR code is going to live and where it will point. So if it is going to be on a product label, do we want to send them to, let's see, send them to a page on your website where maybe there's a Sway presentation embedded? And then there's a button below to order where you used the leaf link and Get Oiling to send them straight to the product that the Sway talks about. That is just one example. Another could be, again, on your business card, you'll have a QR code and it will go to the homepage of your website, right? So then what you want to do, make sure that you have the public and published address from your Get Oiling site. So this means if you put this into a browser, it will open and you can see it, right? Then you want to go to your favorite QR code generator and create your code. We're going to use Canva today, just because we use Canva a lot with Get Oiling. And then if you save this QR code image to your device, make sure to name it with the name of the destination page that you're sending them to. So if the example here is that we're going to create a QR code that goes to our homepage, when you create that file in Canva and you download it, name it homepage QR code, right? So that you can reuse it. If there is another instance in the future where you need to send somebody to your homepage with a QR code, you could simply use that same thing. You don't have to recreate one. And then finally, we can add our QR code, it is an image file after all, to any of our printed materials, to our keynote slides, or any other business assets, like our labels and, you know, pages that sit up on our vendor tables and things like that. So let's go and see it in action and discuss ways to use them. You guys feel free to share any questions that you have as we're going through this. Or if you have an instance where you would like to maybe consider using QR codes, then go ahead and let us know. And we kind of talk through what that might look like for you. So I'm going to get into Canva and actually show you really simply how to go about creating a QR code. So this is Jane's site. And when we go to, to build my site, or so view my site rather, which is just this button right here, this is for a homepage, right? So this is Jane's homepage. And I'm just going to copy this address right here, because I want to create a QR code that I'm going to be using on business cards, okay? So I'm going to go to create a design. QR codes are square. So logos are square. You can see 500 by 500. So that's the same width and height. So that's going to be good for a QR code. We're then going to go over here down to the bottom where it says apps in Canva and just type in QR. And you'll actually see that there are quite a few. This one that just says QR code, honestly, it's the only one that I've ever used. It's pretty simple. You just paste in the address. And then we can customize it. If we want the background color to be a certain color, what the foreground color to be a certain color, we can do that. I'm going to go ahead and hit generate code and you can see what it looks like. I'm going to drag it up to the corner and just make it fill the entire space here. And you can see that you can increase or decrease the margin. I'm going to go to zero margin here. I'm going to give it a background color perhaps, right? You can change these things around if you want to. So this is done. I'm going to name this homepage QR code, just like I mentioned. And I'm going to download this as an image PNG file to my device. So now I can use this wherever I want to use this. And I can go and add this to any place that I would like. So if we go back to home on Canva and maybe we're designing a business card. So now you have that image. If you were going to maybe write an article for your local paper, you could share that image with the publisher and say, along with your image, for instance, and then say that this QR code goes to my website and then they can place that in the print media for you. So maybe you're building a business card. And we want to have, here, I'll just actually use a template here. There we go. And how convenient. This is actually kind of QR code looking, so I'm going to swap that out. I'm going to go down here to projects and I'm going to insert this one. Oops. I'm going to create a second page here and insert that. And I'm going to go and copy this. And I'm going to paste it here. And just make it fit the way that I want to, right? So this is just one example of how you could do this. Although, of course, I want to delete this other one. If you're having your business cards designed and printed somewhere else, again, you could just send this QR code that you've created that goes to your homepage to whatever the printing place is, and, and you could use it that way. If you are creating a flyer, you can basically do the same thing. And you do have the ability to generate a QR code inside of a design. So let's just, we'll, we'll put in flyer here. Type in product flyer and see what it gives me. And then we'll just pick one of their templates. Um, sure, we'll do this one. Okay, so we do want to include a QR code here. So I'm going to go down here to apps. Type in QR. And then same thing, I'm just going to pop in that website address right here. Generate the code and it pops it right into the design. And this is something that exists on Canvas Free account. So you don't have to have Canva Pro to do this. So yeah, that is, that's how you would insert that. Let me see. Nicole says, explain second point, obtain the public published URL from Get Oiling. So I'll show you really quick. In Get Oiling, you have the ability to unpublish your pages. So let's just say, for instance, that you have a landing page that you've made available because you want to capture information and apply a campaign to people ahead of an upcoming event. Now, after the date for that event is passed, the page is not going to be relevant for you anymore, right? So in that case, like the page might not be enabled or published anymore. And whether or not something is public, you can hide blog posts. You can also put pages and other content inside of a member area. So you don't want to send people to, you don't want to send people to a link that doesn't work, right? If they scan their phone over a code, you want to take them somewhere where it's instantly accessible, whatever that is. So it doesn't need to be behind a login or, you know, some page that doesn't exist anymore. So just make sure that you take the link and open it in a new browser window and just make sure that it is something that's published and available before you go and put it into a QR code. Okay, there was a question in the Q and A. Okay, Jolene, yeah, let's go take a look at that. I can slow that down in Canva as well, no problem. So in Canva, what I did first was I went to logo and this is just the homepage, right? You can just go to home in Canva. This is when you log in, you see this, right? So I went to create a design. I like logo just as a shortcut for a square design, right? It's 500 pixels by 500 pixels. You could also optionally just choose to put in 500 by 500 here. But I do like that they actually have templates that correspond with the resolution sizes that can make your life a lot easier. So what we want to look for next is over here on the left-hand side. So this is the same place that you're going to go when you maybe add an element like a circle or, you know, something like this, right? Same place you're going to find your elements and your text, et cetera. You're going to go down here and you can find apps. And actually, the ones that you've used frequently, sometimes we'll show down here at the bottom. But you can go to apps and then there's just, there's tons of stuff that you can put into Canva. It's kind of crazy. I don't know the half of what you can do with this, I'm not a designer. But if you type in QR, it will give you all of their QR code options. And from there, that's where we're going to enter that URL. And then, of course, you can generate your code from there. And then you're going to save this, you know, to basically whatever the name of the place that you would be sending them to with this address. And then you could add that to whatever you'd like. So there, we actually just did a, we just wrapped up a series of live calls for vibrant vendor events. That's going to be something I think that's available for, for the public again soon, as of course. But it's Jill Kearns qualified for the Kona Challenge with no social media, only doing vendor events. And a big part of her strategy is utilizing QR codes that connect to her Get Oiling site at her table. And there's a range of different ways that she goes about doing this. Obviously, you want to make sure that you maybe have something in a little plastic stand on your table. This is something that we do when, when we go to aromas sharing, for instance. It's where we display a text and code. It's also a great place to put a QR code. Because if somebody's standing right there, again, you don't want to have them type in getoiling.com/whatever, whatever, right? We want them to be able to scan and it takes them straight to where they need to go. Now, in our case, we really like to be able to have you go to a landing page, because we want to be able to know your name and to get your email address, so that we can tell you about all the awesome stuff that's happening with us every week that can help you grow your business, right? And so that's a great example of something that you could do at a vendor table. Your QR code could be on the tablecloth that you have. It could be on the flyer or the banner, rather, behind you, flyers on the table. And there's just so, so much more that you can do with that. Jill uses hers with like an enter to win strategy. So she actually gets people signed up into a giveaway and, and they use a QR code. In a lot of cases to do that, she uses paper forms too. It's not a one size fits all thing. It's making everything convenient, so you can get as many leads as possible. Now, there's a couple of other really awesome places that QR codes show up here as well. If you do any retail sales or if you are giving away samples of any kind, or if you're doing any kind of make and takes, having QR codes on your bottle labels, on the product labels, are going to be a massive benefit for you to get that person who now loves that thing they've been using to go and purchase more of it. Now, the easiest thing to do, and this is not the most ideal, the easiest way to accomplish this. I'll show you this first. Let's pretend that you made samples of Thieves Household Cleaners. So we're going to go to the Young Living website. We're going to look up Thieves Household Cleaner. And we are going to click here and we're going to copy this link. Do not put this link into a QR code. There's one more step, okay? You're going to come over here to Get Oiling. And let's just pretend that we're gonna write a blog post. We just need to open an editor in Get Oiling. We're not going to publish this. So we're going to go into our blog post here and we're going to go over here and click more, rather, sorry, more miscellaneous is the one we're looking for. It's the last one over here, more miscellaneous. And then we're going to click this leaf. We're going to make a leaf link. So we're going to paste that Young Living product here. Now, this code, we're going to copy link. And now we're going to go over to Canva. And this is going to create our QR code. So this is going to be Thieves Household Cleaner Young Living link, right? That's going to be what we name this. We'll generate the code. And now, whatever we're doing, how, wherever it's going to go, if we're going to print a, a label that's going to go on to the Thieves Household Cleaner sample, whether it's the packets that you purchased from Young Living directly or a spray bottle that you mix up yourself, you include this QR code on the label so that they can go and purchase. And when they do, your Young Living member number, the sponsor and enroller information is going to carry over. Now, this is the most simplified way to do this. Now, the optimal way to do this would be to create a page or even a blog post, actually, a blog post would be fine, on your Get Oiling site that talks about thieves, that explains why thieves is so awesome. If you use Grow Workspace, embed your All About Thieves Sway file on this page. And then you would, after creating this page, and we'll just make this one real quick as an example, this will be our All About Thieves Household Cleaner. Be good if I could type today. Here we go. Okay. All About Thieves Household Cleaner. We would put our information about thieves on here. We would embed our sway. We would, you know, make this all cute and awesome. And anybody that wanted to learn about thieves and then go buy thieves, it's going to go to this site. So let's go ahead and take our link right here that we got, that we used for our QR code initially. This is the one that goes to Young Living, totally coded up for them to go buy. So we'll say, get yours now. We'll update. And let's say, let's see, learn about the one cleaner that'll take care of your whole house. Right? And this is, of course, on this page where you add all of this great information about thieves, anything that you already have, pictures of thieves, ways you use it, et cetera. You're going to code this up. So when somebody clicks this on the, on the website, here, let's view it. On this page, when they click get yours now, it's going to take them over here to Thieves Household Cleaner. And you can actually see up here in the address bar that the sponsor ID and enroller ID carries over. Now, the final step here is from this page. When we go to view this page, let's go back one. This page that we create, All About Thieves. This is the link ideally that you're going to want to put into your, here, we'll create a new one, into your QR code, right? If you are trying to educate on a product, sell someone on a product, sending them straight to the place where they can buy is fine. You should do it, right? But if you have a little bit more time and you want to be a little more effective, share your story, share your recipes, share the information that you know that made you decide to say yes to thieves on a page, and then link that page to a QR code by going down here to the apps, searching QR, and then linking that page now on your website to your QR code that you can then put on to your label for your make and takes, for your samples, et cetera, right? So that's, that's really the optimal thing to do. And the sky's really the limit here. I've heard, and we actually have talked previously on our other channel about utilizing QR codes in digital circumstances. So maybe if you're networking and you're not a business card person and you want to be like a virtual business card person, you could actually create your, or add your contact card file. You can Google about how to do this, but basically, how do I get my VCF is more or less what you want to Google. Once you've obtained that file, you can add it to the file section of your Get Oiling site. And then when you grab that URL, you can put that into Canva just the same and make a QR code there. And then maybe you have like a mobile friendly page on your website where if you meet somebody, where if you meet somebody, you could say, hey, it's great to meet you. Here, scan your information right here. So I can get you into my contacts. Right? And that'll send them your information or you could send them to a landing page on your website, et cetera. So, uh, lots of great opportunities there. It doesn't just have to be print. Um, it can be virtual. The majority of times it's going to be print. Uh, let's see, Donna says, could you use two buttons, learn more or buy now? Uh, generally speaking, on a website page, if our ultimate goal is for them to purchase, then we don't want to give them a separate option. That's a call to action. So I would use the page to educate. So the learn more is happening on the page. And then interspersed throughout the education on the page, we're offering opportunities for them to click and go purchase. Every page that you make on your website, with the exception of a page that serves as like a directory, like your homepage, for instance, is kind of a directory, right? You walk into an office building and people could go to this wing or that wing. They could go to one of these 17 offices, right? That's what your homepage and your site menu kind of does, right? And we do have a goal, right? For them to read it and know exactly where they want to go and go there. Um, but once they get to where they're going, and this would be an example of that, right? So if it's a page that teaches about Nisha or thieves, uh, or something to that effect or a kit, uh, then you really just want to think about your goal for that page. And when they get to that point, we want them to make a decision and we want their decision to be to purchase, right? Uh, so if we give them a, another rabbit hole to fall into, we're missing that purchase, right? Uh, so generally speaking, uh, and again, this is going to be somebody who in, in a use case like this, where you're putting this onto a label uh, on a, on a bottle that they've ostensibly used up or are actively using and they want to learn more about it. Uh, we should put both of those things on the same page, right? So here's all of the different ways you can use this. And here's why it's so cool. Buy more. And by the way, here's a recipe. Buy more. I think the only other link that I would encourage you to put on a page like that is one, uh, just to get in touch with you, to book a call with you. Uh, you know, to get your recommendations or something to that effect. Amanda, I've never heard about Canva QR codes expiring. I would think that so long as they are active designs in your Canva account, that they would not expire. Buy now is offered just not in the beginning, but after they've gotten familiar with the product. So on a page like that, we can get into that somewhere, Donna. So on a page like this, we have to think about the whole experience, right? So if we're thinking about the whole journey being, somebody has found a QR code on a bottle of thieves household cleaner that's already been pre-mixed that was maybe gifted to them by a realtor that you gave the bottle to. Uh, or maybe they, they did a make and take class with you or whatever that was, right? Or it's a packet that you, you gave away. So they have this product in their hands that they've had some amount of experience with. And on the label, you say, you know, it maybe has your name, phone number, email, whatever, but then it has a QR code that says scan to learn and buy more, right? Learn more and get, and get a refill or whatever, right? Um, I prefer something like scan to learn more, get recipes and my discount. Right? That kind of, that's a little bit more compelling language. So then you would send them to a page like this. Now I would absolutely put the go ahead and buy it now right up here at the top. Because if they are already in love with it, they don't want to scroll through 5,000 words of copy to find the link to buy. They may just get frustrated and go away. So don't be afraid to put the invitation to purchase right up top. And then you can move into a different section. Obviously we'd swap this lovely lady photo out with, uh, you know, maybe a picture of a thieves cleaner bottle or an array of thieves products. Maybe in this particular case, we will not use a link, uh, and we will, uh, you know, talk about the history of thieves. And then in the next section, you can talk about thieves in the bathroom, thieves in the kitchen, thieves for this use, thieves for that use, right? And then down at the bottom, you give my favorite recipe. But after every couple of sections, you want to make sure that you're popping another button in exactly like this one that takes them to where they can go to buy. Hundred percent, just like a sales page. A good sales page is going to say at the very top, here's the thing that solves your problem. Want it now? Here you go. And, and if somebody who's red and ready right now is going to click it and go purchase, and you want that, you want people who are ready to be able to make a move, right? But somebody who needs to chew on this information a little bit more, give them more. But then intersperse it with that, hey, you ready? Here you go, right? Um, and then of course, take that all the way to the bottom. Great questions and keep them coming. Allison says, not sure if you mentioned this, but if someone is on a phone looking at your website and there's a QR code, can they still get to it? So QR codes aren't really something you're going to want to put on your website. Because your website is usually not going to be displayed or printed, right? Um, it needs to be something that's displayed. So the instance that I gave earlier where you might sort of like have, I, I would even do this as an image and not a page on your website. Um, I would go into Canva and maybe create here. I'll show you real quick. This could be like a digital business card. Uh, I'll show you what that can look like. Uh, you would go into Canva and I would look up maybe phone wallpaper as a template. And it's going to give us approximately a decent resolution for a smartphone sized, uh, thing here. And so we can give it a nice little background. Uh, we can put, um, you know, something super brief here, maybe your name. Uh, and then you can pop that QR code that maybe goes to a landing page on your website. Uh, that's, uh, where they can put in their name and email. And they're now contacting your system. That's something that you could use uh, in your, um, in your networking, just as an, as, as an example. So here's our homepage QR code that we created already. Right? So we can just pop that right there. And then you could save this image into your phone. Uh, and then when you're at a networking event, instead of like handing out and collecting paper cards, uh, you could use this instead and gather people's information right away. Uh, but outside of that, or maybe creating a mobile rip, like friendly version of that on your website, putting QR, QR codes on a website isn't really a thing. Because if you're on a website, you could just give them the link and they can click and go, right? So, um, this isn't actually something you're going to put onto your website. It's where you're going to, you're going to put it somewhere. So people go to your website. Uh, okay. Yeah, Greg, thank you for that. So if I'm doing a DIY that I'm making labels for such as an elderberry class, I would want to put a QR code on that. Yes, yes, absolutely. And maybe it goes to a special page on your good oiling site, uh, where you share a recipe. Uh, you put your leaf link to the elderberry gummies and some information about those, right? Uh, and then you, you're basically giving folks an opportunity to, in perpetuity, as long as they have that bottle of elderberry syrup that you're probably making at, at this make and take. Uh, then, um, then they'll be able to see that QR code and then go get that information. Awesome, awesome questions, you guys. And yeah, again, let me know if there is something that you are, uh, you know, wanting to figure out how to use a QR code for, uh, then keep it coming. And if you want to come out and chat about any of this, feel free to raise your hand and we can work together live. Um, Allison, a wishlist link is a fine thing to put there. I would still consider putting it onto a webpage, page on your website, on your alisoncrow.com or however you have your website set up, uh, that has a page that doesn't just link to the wishlist, but maybe talks about what's in it, right? Because the, it is great that Young Living allows us to make and share wish lists, right? But it doesn't do a great job of selling what's in the wishlist. So you could create a page on your website that does a good job of that. And then have the link, the call to action, the buy this now on that page. Go to your wishlist link from Young Living. Absolutely. Really good question. I think we're caught up on those. If anybody has any requests, even if it has nothing to do with QR codes, uh, if you want to have a review of work that you're doing or you have questions about, uh, you know, something that you're working on next in your business, feel free, add to the Q and A or raise your hand. And, uh, and let us know and we'll bring you out to chat and we can work on something here together. Hi, Camelia.
Hello, wonderful people.
Good to hear from you.
I know that you, yes, and I need to be in contact with you. I'm very excited with all the things that are going in the mind that I know the team can bring it through. And I know we've spoken about this before, but I, I can't remember. So on some of the things like another project that I did, I, I put the regular link, you know, to get to get oiling. But I know a lot of people have gone to whether it's Jill or Moth or, or you know, Julie.com or whichever. Should we? And I have some things that I will determine I'm going to do those vendor events, you know, and I'm going back and brand your, brand your business, your other fabulous thing. Um, so I can make sense of it because some of those things are coming together. Should I then look into instead of for general things where i- i- it might be with the Red Cross project or lives, I want all things to go back to there's something we can offer, whether it's, you know, the window project or whichever, smoke alarms in your home. Um, but uh, should it be something, you know, more gen, uh, more specific to my name as opposed to with the long with the get oiling, that's part one. And part two, I realized after all the work that I've seen you guys doing with other people, my, though it might be nice, my about me is the first thing they see and it's kind of a long story, I guess. And now it feels like, wow, they're not getting to the, I, I just feel like them bombard it with me and I'm not serving necessarily well because it's, it's too long. And maybe they should be seeing something else first and then a short thing.
Okay, so the first thing, um, the beauty of using a QR code is that they aren't interacting with the domain name at all. It's just going to send them to the link, right? So you don't have to print out a get oiling.com slash, 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 right? You don't have to worry about that. So even if you don't have a custom domain set up yet, this still presents beautifully professionally awesomely. And, and it, and it presents as branded to you. Most people, when they QR code it and they go to a site and they know you, right? There's some context there. They're not too focused on what's in the URL field. So, um, so this is actually, you know, if you, if you haven't branded your domain yet, this is actually using QR codes on your business cards and flyers and things like that. That's a great way to share your link. Um, and you know, you just want to make sure that, you know, if, if your website address changes in the future, your domain changes, uh, then you would just want to make sure that those, um, assets are swapped out with ones with the correct QR code. Now to your, to your question or your point about, um, the length of your about me uh, and your, your my story and photo on your website. Um, I've seen it and we've discussed it before. And I don't see anything wrong with it, Camelia. And you, you serve well, uh, in the context of your relationships. And people are perfectly welcome to keep scrolling if they're done with that part. Uh, you're not holding them up in any way. And I actually think that, um, because you give so much of your heart uh, and you are so very present with that and the way you communicate. I don't, I, I actually think that people who resonate with you get value out of, of that presence that you give. Uh, so I, 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 I wouldn't insert any self doubt into that. I think you, you can, you can chug along with your networking and serving in your community like you do. And, um, and I think that the people who feel that they are satiated with the first few sentences, they can just scroll on by. They don't have to finish the rest of it.
Okay. So the QR, so creating a QR code will be important because I do have that event at the, the open house I was mentioning on another program at the school. So I am working on what can I do? I only have a short period. It's not a, you know, it's not a regular thing. It's different. So I want to make sure whatever I have and maybe the QR code and maybe like we talked about, maybe the thieves would be the thing to do. And, and maybe, so maybe later we can talk about what does that look like and which thing should I have for that? And maybe a gift to a teacher as a raffle for the teachers as opposed to just the public information for them. But maybe not a raffle, but a gift for the teachers that enter for it because they're all potential people as well. So I just want to make sure that the site is set up for, that you feel like it's set up good for that and just creating that.
Yeah. So what, what I would consider doing, because I know this is something that's coming up fairly soon for you. Definitely consult the advice that she, I know you've gotten in Jill's, uh, vibrant vendor events class. Um, and, and follow what she's got there because that's the formula. But, uh, but make, make sure that you have, um, a stand up sort of, you know, inside of the plastic container, the acetate container, where there's like a page standing up on a table. Make sure you have at least something like that. If you've got things that you can print and hand out and you've got time to do that, by all means, absolutely do it. But if you're going to have anything that you are giving away at the table uh, that people are walking away with, 100%, make sure if it's a product or a bottle, there's a sticker on it that's got the QR code or there's a flyer that's got the QR code or something like that. And you can keep it really simple. You don't have to go and reinvent the wheel. If you are, again, if it's something that's coming up really soon, you could simply take, I know you've got Grow Workspace. You can take the All About Thieves sway and, and you could edit your version of that and put your links in there and you could share that, right? Uh, or again, you could just make your leaf link and just pop your leaf link in there and people can go purchase. Just make sure that you also maybe have your contact information uh, on there as well, if they wanted to get in touch with you. And, and definitely follow what Jill teaches about the whole like enter to win and how you follow up with all of the people who entered to win. Make sure you do that because you're going to have that whole school subscribe to thieves household cleaner before you know it.
Okay. Yeah, I got to review that part because I've, so I will review that piece. And I will not doubt the, how they enter. And then just getting to the other, um, pieces. So I, I'll need to review everything again because I'm not holding the information in my head the way that I want to. But your feedback is very valuable for that. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for coming out, Camelia. It's always good to hear from you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jolene. Uh, Jolene has been trying to figure out how to add our team events to her events page and have people register on her site and avoid them having to register twice. Um, requires registration on Zoom, their weekly event, same day and time, but different topics. So, uh, Jolene, is this, I, raise your hand if you're okay with coming out to just chat through this real quick. Love you now. Okay. Awesome. Hey. Hey there. Okay. So, um, this is, um, like your uplines recurring Zoom meeting that you're wanting to promote. Yeah. Yeah. So, um, is, i- is she communicating with people, um, about these events?
Yes, but so if I wanted to send, so she has a link tree page. Um, that has a list of all these wonderful links and replays and all that. And I'm just, if I've, if we've got like a class on inflammation, say next Thursday, I really want it to be super direct. And instead of me sending her link tree link, I'd really like to know if they're going or they're interested so that I can do follow up with them. And I just don't know, I don't know how to get the link to make sure that the link that here, can you take that? I mean, okay, um, I don't know. Because when I click onto register, it populates my information for that whole Zoom thing for people to register for Zoom. So I'm a little hung up on that and I would really rather not send them to that big link tree page and just send them to whatever they need to do for that one particular class.
Okay, but it's a recurring one. Okay. Is, doesn't she have get oiling? She can, she doesn't have to use paid Zoom.
She does. Yeah.
Um, okay. Have her call me.
We'll have to talk to her about that.
Yeah, we, we haven't talked since, um, I, we, we've talked once, once since convention. So, um, I need to set up a call with her to make sure she knows how to do that. Uh, so if, if it were set up and get oiling as a recurring Zoom link, that would even, even if it's in her account, you could be sharing the join link actively and you could be promoting the join link actively. Uh, and you could even put that on the other side of an opt-in on your website. So essentially what you're doing here, like if you have uh, Zoom webinars or Zoom meetings that you're setting up on, on like the paid, separate paid Zoom, then people are registering for it on Zoom. Uh, but we could have it set up to where the same link is used by you, is used by her, is used by others who promote this call uh, throughout your team. And then on your own separate websites or link trees or whatever, um, you would, well, on, on your link tree, you would be hers. In this case, you would put a landing page there instead of like the Zoom thing. And they would register and then they get the link in the campaign, right? So here's the link for our regular call. This is exactly how we set up our weekly work session, right? Uh, so the join link, you get access to it like an hour before we go live. And we also give it to you, uh, to put onto your calendar and we give it to you like to save into your bookmarks. And that's something that you can do in a campaign and on a confirmation page. And that's something that you can do in a campaign and on a confirmation page after somebody has opted in. But it's only gonna work if that recurring meeting link to join, that join link uh is something that you're able to share. Now, if she's not ready to uh break out of that system that she's in right now, you could see if there is a join link that bypasses registration um that's available to her in Zoom. And then maybe you could use that.
Okay.
But I would say like, let's, let's have a team call and make sure you guys are all using this well.
That would be, it would be awesome because we do have a lot of people in our team with get oiling. So that would be great.
Yeah, so and and we'll, we we can do a team call.
So that just made me think of something that I not utilize, that I probably can, you know how? So when I go to my back office and get oiling, I see that banner that says, you know, team call today or whatever, um weekly work session. And then in Jill's, same thing, it was at the top of one, one of the sections, it was like, hey, our call's coming up, whatever. I have not done that for my own personal vault. And so maybe we could, you could add that into your weekly work session of how to just set that up sometime.
So so how to host recurring weekly calls?
And how to, how to edit the, the section of the um uh member area so that we can all just kinda have that banner up.
Yeah, yeah, there is. So as a dedicated topic, I'm one hundred percent gonna put that in uh as one for us to cover. But just so you know, if you look for the book club training that we did, it does show exactly what you're talking about. So it goes into how to set up the recurring live meeting link and the page. And there is a, I believe there's a resource bundle for that too, for for the page that I I think actually Jill used in her vault.
Okay, yeah. Awesome. Awesome. Well, I will, this is helpful. I was wondering why I just couldn't quite figure out how to make this happen. So I will get in touch with Mary and um let her know what we talked about and then we can set something up.
All right, sounds good. Look forward to talking to you soon.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys, for all of your incredible questions today. If you have any more, feel free to pop those in while we're still here. Uh we will be live again next week. Uh as always, we are here every Thursday at noon Eastern unless there is convention or a national holiday here in the US, usually like the big ones. So um so yeah, if that's it for today, we're gonna go ahead and get going. If you have requests for topics that you would like to learn more about, uh then please let us know. We will add those to the list like this one that Jolene just mentioned. We'll talk about that uh on an upcoming episode here. I think, oh no, that's a thank you. We've got to thank you in the Q and A. Awesome. Well, I hope you guys have a fantastic week. We look forward to seeing you again next week, same time. And in the meantime, we'll see you in the Facebook group. Have a great week, everybody.